All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Camarillo City Council for Wednesday, March 13, 2024, to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo, here. Councilmember San Angelo.
Here.
Councilmember Tennyson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kilby.
Here.
And Mayor Trembley.
Here. Ms. Richman, would you please provide our announcements relative to closed session?
Yes, thank you. Mayor and council, we have two items on the agenda. One is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 549, 56.94. And a second matter for existing litigation, OPV Coalition versus Fox Canyon Ground Management Agency. If there's any reportable action, I will make that report. Thank you.
Thank you. The record will reflect. We'll now recess into closed session for those items. We'll be back at 5 o'clock.[182.26]
I'd like to call this meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District to order and let the record reflect that all directors are here. Maybe have a flag salute. Dr. Martinez Bravo, will you lead us?
Sure, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Let me begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the people of this nation. It is... Sorry, is that okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have any changes to the agenda? Are there any public comments for the Camrio Sanitary District? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Director Kildy?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Trembley?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo?
Yes. Okay, do we have any board or staff member comments or reports? Seeing none, we're going to recess. We have two discussion items, but they will be discussed joint with the City Council, so for now I will recess.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and... Speak into the microphone. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene the meeting of the City Council. And the first item up is Item C, which is our Red Cross Month proclamation. And we're pleased to welcome to the podium Tony Briggs, the Regional Chief Executive Officer for Red Cross, Ken Bauer, and Sabrina Astian. I hope I've pronounced that correctly. Well, I lucked out. That's great.
And Riz.
And we would... I have a proclamation for you, but I think what I'll do is after you speak to us, then we'll do the proclamation, and I'll bring everybody up and we can do a photo there. We're getting used to our new digs here in the library, so this is a little different from Council Chamber.
What was interesting is I was here all last week during... when it was a polling place. Volunteer poll worker, too, so that was an interesting experience.
It's a different setup tonight.
Totally different, yeah. Behind curtains. Anyways, my name's Ken Bauer. I'm a resident here in Camrio. I live right up the street. And I've been a volunteer with the Red Cross for 13 years now, since I retired. Every eight minutes, a Red Cross volunteer responds to a home fire somewhere in the United States. The need for blood, which we're really known for, is always constant. There's been a blood shortage recently. We have overcome that, but we still always need blood. Our Red Cross volunteers provide 24/7 service, so many times, responding to home fires, responding to the service for armed forces out at Point Magoo. We have a number of people there. We have a bike ride every year that we raise funds for that. And the message I really want to leave with everyone is to always remember the 90/90 rule with the Red Cross. 90 cents of every dollar you donate goes to services. And 90% of people you see with this... Besides Tony, the rest of us are all volunteers. So, you know, when you go to a shelter or something like that, you see a lot of people running around. We're all volunteers. So just to give you an idea of what we've done here in Camrio, we collected 885 units of blood. We trained 1,608 residents on first aid training. And we responded to 16 home fires in the past year. So, we've been busy. Now, that's just Camrio. It doesn't give you numbers of all Ventura County, but I don't want to bore you to death. But with that...
Tony and what do you want to read it? Okay. Well, thank you very, very much. We really appreciate that. So, we're in new digs and we're trying to get used to it. So, what I'd like to do, if you're okay with this, is I'd like to have you come up here. I'm going to present you with a proclamation, but I'm hoping that all of the rest of the council members can join me in a picture against the city seal, and we're gonna do it that way. This is sort of a little bit of a new tradition, if that's okay, that everybody, all the council members would join in that? Is that okay with everybody?
That's great.
All right, so let's do that. Yeah, we're all gonna go in front. According to Kristi, I've got to speak into the microphone, because I want to make sure that there's a record. Maybe next time Kristi will do a handheld mic. So I want to make sure that, for the record, that we all... Oh, well, there we go. Why didn't I think of that? Here's a handheld. Thanks very much. So I want to make sure that we all... We are honoring the American Red Cross tonight. We're honoring its humanitarian mission. We appreciate everything that the Red Cross does. And we want to present you with this proclamation, which is substantially... There are substantially more words in this proclamation, which I'm not going to read to you in toto, but we want you to know how much we appreciate all of your efforts. Congratulations. And what we'll do, if that's okay. So anybody who happens to be watching this on livestream knows that the council, we're kind of following... finding our way on how to do this. So thank you again to the Red Cross for being our guinea pigs on this tonight. We really appreciate and appreciate you and all the work that you do. Thank you. We have a second presentation coming up tonight, and I believe Chantel is going to come up and speak to us about the Los Personas Community Academy. Chantel?
All right, good evening. I am Chantel Limone, and I work in the Community Relations Division of the City Manager's Office. And as part of our city's community engagement strategy, we are excited to introduce a new city program tonight, the Los Personas Community Academy. So what is the Community Academy? The Los Personas Community Academy is an interactive program designed to educate community members on the roles and responsibilities of the city of Camrio, and to encourage ongoing engagement by sharing and promoting opportunities for public participation. The academy will be a fun way for those who live, work, and/or attend school in Camrio to engage with one another and talk about our city and learn more about how we all work together to make it such a desirable place to be. The goals of the academy are to educate participants about various city programs, projects, services, and activities; increase community engagement and effective communication with community members; foster meaningful connections between participants and city representatives; enhance opportunities to engage youth, meaning high school or young adult ages, and develop future leaders; and to promote opportunities for ongoing public participation and continue to develop the city's volunteer base. So we have a program outline on the screen for you. The academy will take place over six sessions here at the Camrio Library from 5:45 to 8:00 p.m. beginning on April 22. Week one will begin with an introduction to the city of Camrio. Week two will focus on the history, heritage, and quality of life here. Week three will be about public safety and emergency services. Week four will address the City Council, elections, and public meetings. Week five will go into public works and our capital improvement program. And at the conclusion, week six, we will discuss community development and economic development. We have just begun promoting our community academy in a variety of ways, including City Scene Newsletter, our city social media channels, our community channel or government channel. We've created a dedicated webpage on our city website for the academy, and it's also linked on our homepage under Trending Topics. And we're leveraging our good relationships with community partners to spread the word about this opportunity. That includes CSUCI, our local high schools, and the media is helping us to promote this as well. So in closing, I wanted to announce that the application period is open and will remain open through April 3. And for more information or to apply, we encourage you to visit cityofcamrio.org/communityacademy. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Limone. Are there any questions from any council members? Councilmember Tennyson?
I don't have a question, just a quick comment. For 25 years now, our police departments in the contract cities with the sheriff's department have been doing citizens academies. And I think there's no better way than to expand this to a community academy. And it's done nothing but opened the eyes and created a stream of volunteers for our local law enforcement, citizen patrol, DART teams, and things like that. And it gives the community an understanding of what we can and especially what we cannot do as a city. So I think it's a great idea whose time has come, and I'm glad to see this moving forward.
Other comments? Councilmember Santangelo?
Thank you for your presentation. I was so excited to see when this started to hit social media. I think it's a fantastic program. I love the fact that we're increasing our engagement with the community. And I know that when I became a council member, there was so much for me to learn about what goes into running a city. So I can only imagine how useful it'll be for our community. So thank you for the presentation and for all your work behind this.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Thank you also, and ditto, as my council members have stated. I really appreciated Councilmember Tennyson's statement, because it looks like this is already being done in other capacities, and it's been successful. So I'm really looking forward to that success within our city. The only question that I had was, you mentioned that it's going out through the media. Does that include radio? Or just our VC star? Or how are we doing that?
At this time, we're pushing out the messaging in a variety of ways to the local newspapers, including the Ventura County Star, the Acorn. We have not done radio announcements for this program at this time, but it's something we will take into consideration.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll just say, I'll say ditto. My council member, I can remember, we had started off, some of us being able to remember this. We had what we call sidewalk superintendents that would go around and kind of check out the roads and the sidewalks and stuff. And of course, the citizens academy we've had for a long time, and now this. So, great program. I think it's gonna do really well. So I'm excited about it.
I'll say ditto. Thank you very much. All right, we're now gonna move to council and staff comments and reports. Who'd like to start? Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. March 4, I attended the Rotary Clubs Viva la Comida fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club. March 4, I also attended the CSUCI Site Authority Meeting. And March 8, I actually participated as portraying Carmen Camrio at one of our local schools. And I just wanted to give a huge shout out to AEW Camrio, American Association of University Women, especially as we are celebrating Women's International Women's Month. They do such a wonderful job. And one of the things that they do with this program is every year, they sort out different women who have impacted our history in one way or another. And there are all volunteers, and we have volunteers who come and read scripts and really get into the character and portray these characters at different schools. And so I've been doing it since my son was in kindergarten, and he's actually 16 today. So I've been doing it for a while, which I really enjoy. And the cutest thing is the kids actually think you're that person. And sometimes you're going around town, and you know, they'll be like, "Oh, are you the astronaut?" So it was a very, very rewarding experience, and I'm very thankful for their service to our community. Saturday, March 9, I also attended the first game of the season on opening day for Miracle League. My heart was definitely full that day. It was such a beautiful event. And I know it has definitely been a labor of love with so many people who have come together to do this for children and families with disabilities. March 13, which was today, I actually met with the president of Sunny Horses, which is also a local nonprofit. And I also wanted to give a huge shout out to them, because they are so visible throughout Ventura County. Like, every event that I go, they are there. And their mission is around creating like a positive relationship between law enforcement and children in our community. So they're doing such a great job as well. And that is all I have.
All right. Councilmember Santangelo?
Thank you. On March 5, I attended the first night of the Camrio Academic Olympics, first night of quizzes. March 12, I had an airport meeting with the Save Our Skies Camrio, which was a group of citizens concerned about the airport. On March 7, I attended the CPA Board of Directors' meetings. And I don't usually list what I didn't go to, but I sadly was not able to attend Viva la Comida or the Miracle League first game. But I wanted to recognize both of those activities, especially the Miracle League. Huge shout out to Rick and Jody Peña for all their work behind that and to making it such a fantastic project come to fruition. It must have been so exciting. And I'm gonna make it out there. I guess they have games every Saturday, so I'm gonna be out there one of these Saturdays to catch a real game. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Vice Mayor Kudus?
Just the only thing is, a comment on the Miracle League. I was unable to attend that as well. However, congratulations to all those that put that together. It's amazing, amazing, amazing what they were able to do. It's just incredible. The amount of money that they raised, what they're doing for our community is second to none. So, just a comment for that. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Tennyson?
I did have the opportunity to attend the grand opening of the Miracle League, and our mayor did a fantastic job of representing the city. It was an interesting opening ceremony with the sheriff's honor guard present. And the Ventura County Sheriff's helicopter did a flyover for the ceremony. And the two young men that sang the National Anthem, you can't help but be touched by these two brothers that do the National Anthem. I'm surprised we haven't seen him at a Dodger game doing the National Anthem. I mean, it'll bring a tear to your eyes. Seeing the smiles on the participants' faces when they came out onto the field for the first time, and they did it in big league style, coming around the foul lines and lining up on both baselines. My only sad thing about it was there were no representatives, no team that's named after my team, the Minnesota Twins, but I guess I understand that. I, too, attended Viva la Comida, and on a personal note, it was my opportunity as grandpa to show off the first granddaughter in the Tennyson/Green family after six grandsons. So it was especially touching. It was a phenomenal event, and I think that it's probably the largest Viva la Comida they've had. And they had to recycle their tickets to keep people coming in. So it was a great opportunity, a great community fundraiser, a great time seeing a lot of our members of the community. So, that's it.
Thank you. So for things that I've been to since the last meeting, first was March 4, Viva la Comida. I was lucky enough, I'm wearing my Rotary hat, to emcee that event. And the attendance was tremendous. And we got to see a new grandbaby as well. But Rotary, we do a lot of good with the funds that are raised, so we're very appreciative of the community's support. On March 7, I was able to attend the Super Quiz and the Awards for Camrio Academic Olympics. I sat through the Super Quiz for an hour, and I learned some new facts, which I won't bore you with. But the amount of time and effort that the kids put in studying the books to compete in the Super Quiz is just astonishing how much work they put in. So kudos to them, kudos to John Light, and all of the organizing committee for Camrio Academic Olympics. They do a wonderful job. On March 8, I had two committee meetings for the MetroLink Board of Directors, both the Audit and Finance Committee and the Executive Committee. On March 8, I also had a special board meeting for the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Authority. And then on March 9, I was lucky enough to represent council at the Miracle League of the 805, opening day of its inaugural season. And again, a thank you, a big thank you to Jody and Rick Peña. This is an eight-year project in the making. And a big thank you to Rick and Jody Peña. And a big thank you to Rick and Jody Peña, to their Board of Directors, to all their volunteers, to the NewCo Foundation, Dave and Don Gross, to the McCarty Family, McCarty Towing, all of the donors. They were, they made this happen. So I'm very thankful. And as I said to a number of people, this shows the power. The Miracle League, there have been efforts in many communities in the United States to try to establish a Miracle League. And it hasn't always been successful, but in Camarillo, it's happened. And that's a reflection, and a very positive reflection on our community. So I'm very proud of Rick and Jody and everyone, Randy Churchill, et cetera, everything that they have been able to accomplish. As far as comments, there has been, I think, a good amount of public discussion relative to Camarillo Airport on what's going on with the airport layout plan update and what the process of that is. And I know there's both the ALP, the ALP update, and the noise study, which I, which those are really independent documents. But I think there's been enough discussion that what I would ask for is that we put an agenda item on for our next council meeting to discuss, to discuss that and allow members of the public to come in if they wish to discuss it. And have that as an agenda item for our next meeting. I think under council policy, I need to get a second council member to say that that's okay. And I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot.
I can second that.
Okay. Councilmember Martinez-Brava, thank you for that. So if we, I can ask you if we can put that on our agenda for March 27th? That would be great. And that's it from me. All right. Next up is, we have consent items E through J. Is there anybody who wishes to discuss or poll any of the consent items?
Move approval.
I'll second.
All right. I think the tie went to the runner in this case, Councilmember Martinez-Brava. So we have a motion and a second to, on items E through J of the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez-Brava?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildee?
Yes.
And Mayor Trembley?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have Commander Tennyson, who is going to be presenting to us on item K, which is the approval of addition of a patrol sergeant cover car. Welcome to work, Chief Tennyson, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Trembley, Vice Mayor Kildee, and council. The item before you tonight is a request for consideration to add a patrol sergeant cover car to our patrol operations here in Camarillo. The Camarillo Police Department continually evaluates staffing levels for patrol services in the city to determine if those levels meet needs and expectations required for effective law enforcement services. Our review of law enforcement services indicates an ongoing need for us to add a patrol sergeant cover car in order to provide the law enforcement services. A cover car provides supplemental coverage during the busiest time of the day to ensure an overlap in supervision during hours in which call volumes and workload are highest. I think when we're talking about this patrol cover car, it's best to start with a description so everybody understands the importance of a patrol sergeant in law enforcement. Many of us in law enforcement consider the patrol sergeant position the most important position in a law enforcement agency. They are the supervisor for the frontline women and men in law enforcement who are the face of policing in all of our communities. A 2018 report from the Police Executive Research Forum indicated that sergeants directly supervise 85% of law enforcement professionals in any city. That just goes to show how important a sergeant and supervision is and how much influence they have on law enforcement operations and culture in a law enforcement agency. The responsibilities of patrol sergeant are vast, and they can be very complex at times. On the, on the screen, you see a handful of the responsibilities. This is not all of them, but this is the major responsibilities of a patrol sergeant. Number one, they lead and manage during critical incidents. We're fortunate that, you know, those critical incidents don't happen a lot here in Camarillo, but our sergeants are still expected to be on scene of incidents that don't involve shootings and that sort of things, but a pursuit, a use of force, on arrests. We want our patrol sergeants out there on the scene to make sure that our deputy sheriffs are following all of our policies and procedures and are ensuring that the law enforcement service that we're providing is in line with policies, procedures, and expectations of our communities. We review every single use of force. Our patrol sergeants review every single use of force that occurs in the city. That review includes reading reports by our deputies. It includes watching all the body worn camera footage that captures the incident. It also includes authoring a report to our station captain that indicates what the summary of the incident was and what their opinion on that use of force is. And so they're the first line of reviewing every single use of force that happens in the city of Camarillo. Importantly, they provide feedback on our deputies' performance. They provide mentoring. They provide directing and development of our deputies. So I won't go through all of these, but their role in what we do is incredibly important. So how do we determine whether we have appropriate staffing levels for our sergeants? We look at a number of factors. Our report tonight and the presentation is going to focus on four major areas, but they include the span of control, so the number of deputies that our patrol sergeants might be overseeing at any given time, the geographic size of the area that we patrol, the complexity of the job function is an important consideration. From a risk management perspective, what are the legal risks to the job that our deputies are doing that these sergeants are overseeing? That's incredibly important. The time of day and the day of week, all of those things are impacted and determine the levels that we need for sergeant supervision. And sophistication of crime and criminals, those things have changed over the years, and it requires closer supervision based on the complexity of crimes that are being committed nowadays. So the first area that I want to focus on is the span of control. And this is quite simply the number of deputy sheriffs that a sergeant might be overseeing at any given time. I've broken this down into two different categories. The bottom in blue, and this is a comparison across five contract cities that the sheriff's office provides contract policing for. The blue number at the bottom is the number of direct reports, the number of patrol deputies who are assigned just to patrol, who are out in the field at the highest levels. So during the middle of the day, when the call volumes are highest, our Camarillo patrol would have 11 patrol deputies who are specifically assigned to patrol functions out in the street at any given time. Our neighbor up the hill, Thousand Oaks, at its highest staffing levels would have 14, 6, 4, and 5 in the other contract cities. Now, the number in gold represents specialized units, who although they have a sergeant assigned to their units, these deputies are out in the field while their sergeants are handling administrative tasks, they're involved in meetings, maybe in our city, maybe in another city. So when these deputies from our specialized units, and I named three of those units, our traffic deputies who are driving in marked black and white cars, conducting traffic enforcement, our SROs and our directed enforcement unit, when they're out in the field and they get involved in one of those incidents I mentioned earlier, an arrest, a use of force, a critical incident like that, the first sergeant that's going to be on scene is not their sergeant who's maybe sitting in a meeting or who's at the station writing performance evaluations. It's going to be the patrol sergeant who's out in the field supervising patrol operations. And so in Camarillo, at the highest workload time, busiest time of the day, we might have 11 other deputy sheriffs who are out in the field at that busiest time. Thousand Oaks has 11, Moore Park 3, Fillmore 2. So you can see at the busiest time, Camarillo has up to 22 deputies in the field, while our friends in Thousand Oaks have up to 25. The difference that I'd like to point out here is that Camarillo has one patrol sergeant on duty at all times. The city of Thousand Oaks has two patrol sergeants on duty at all times. Moore Park, Fillmore, and Ojai also have one. So when you look at the span of control in Camarillo at the busiest time, our sergeants could be supervising 22 deputy sheriffs. The next biggest is Thousand Oaks, but remember, they have two sergeants. So they're at 12, 12 and a half average number of deputy sheriffs. So our sergeants have a much greater span of control than any other sergeant anywhere else on the sheriff's office in any of our contract cities. The other thing, the next thing I'd like to focus on is the geographic size of our jurisdiction. And the reason this is important is because our sergeants are expected to be present at arrests, at uses of force, during traffic collisions, at critical incidents, and many other incidents. Our sergeants, we want them to be working out of their cars, but at times, they're at the station when they're conducting evaluations for a deputy, they're reviewing personnel files, they're sitting at their desk writing computers. And so the size of the jurisdiction matters when we're talking about a sergeant needing to be out on the scene of an incident. You can see from this map that our jurisdiction, patrolled out of the Camarillo station, extends all the way up to South Mountain Road, north of Somas. It includes all of the Oxnard Plains. It includes a large swath of the Santa Monica Mountains and Point Mugu State Park, and it goes all the way over to the LA County line on PCH. So our area, our operational jurisdiction in Camarillo is huge. And with one sergeant and the number of deputies, if we have a deputy down on South Coast who needs a sergeant for some reason, that sergeant is going to be a long ways away from any other incident that might occur anywhere else in the jurisdiction, here in the city of Camarillo, maybe in Somas or somewhere else. We've had times before where, when there is a call in one part of our jurisdiction, where we might borrow a sergeant from one of our other jurisdictions, maybe our headquarters station out of Ventura, we might borrow a sergeant, and they might have to come over and supervise a scene, or a Thousand Oaks sergeant might come down if our sergeant is tied up. That's not an ideal situation for us because the timing of getting a sergeant on scene of an incident is very important. The next thing I'd like to focus on is quite simply our calls for service by time of day. So you can see from the chart on the right side of the page, and this includes our calls for service for all of 2023. Now, it's broken down, it's in military time on the left side, and so that covers every hour of the day. It becomes really apparent that at about 7:00 in the morning, our call volume starts to rise significantly. It almost doubles between 6:00 hour and 7:00 hour, increases throughout the day to a high of at around 3:00 to 4:00, the biggest number of calls for service, and then starts to taper off after that into the evening, around 10:00 or 11:00 at night. I'd like to note that this doesn't include self-initiated activity by our deputy sheriffs, which is incredibly important part of providing effective law enforcement services. Now, what I will say, though, is that the self-initiated activity, it is lagging behind. When our deputies are receiving a lot of calls for service, there's not as much time for self-initiated activity. So that self-initiated activity for us tends to increase later into the evening when the calls for service die down a little bit. So that kind of pushes the call volume or the workload volume created by this kind of activity, it pushes it later into the evening. But it does, it does continue to increase throughout the evening. I'd also like to look at this from the perspective of workload. There is a measure of productivity in law enforcement out of a station, out of a deputy sheriff, and every measure of productivity results in the potential for work for our sergeants. So what this chart shows, we've added together over 2023, calls for service, arrests, citation, reports written, and self-initiated, self-initiated activity in Camarillo and across all of our contract cities. So when you add those together, in Camarillo last year, we had 59,000 pieces of work, essentially. The workload's about 59,000 when you add all those together. Up in Thousand Oaks, it's 82,000, Moore Park 24, Fillmore 18, Ojai 16. Again, these indicators of productivity among our deputy sheriffs, they result in work for sergeants. Whenever a crime report is taken, a sergeant has to review that crime report, ensure that it's accurate and that it's written well, and approve it. In Camarillo last year, we authored 11,000 reports out of our Camarillo station. We review citations that are submitted, 6,000 citations we wrote out of Camarillo last year. Self-initiated activity, our deputies initiated their own activity, traffic stops, consensual encounters, 16,000 times last year. So any one of those can result in work for our sergeants. They can result in citizen complaints. Fortunately, we have very few of those here. Our deputies are out doing their work the way we expect them to, but we do have citizen complaints. Those require a lot of work for our sergeants to speak with the citizen who's initiating a complaint, to review body worn camera footage, to review reports, to ensure that our people are doing the work the way we expect them to do the work. And so again, I've noted at the bottom of this chart that, yes, Thousand Oaks is what you would imagine, much higher than we are in Camarillo because their population is half again as much as we are here in Camarillo. But keep in mind, they have two sergeants to handle that workload that's created there in Thousand Oaks while we have one. And so when you look at this, Moore Park, Fillmore, and Ojai also have one sergeant. And so our workload that we're creating for our sergeants here in Camarillo is significantly higher than it is for any one of our other stations in sheriff's jurisdictions. So what are the benefits of a sergeant cover car reducing the workload, reducing the span of control? Well, the benefits are increased time for training and for briefing. Best practices, believe it or not, they change in law enforcement. As society changes, what the norm is and what is expected from law enforcement changes. And it's critically important that we address those issues through regular briefings, through regular trainings, which is the role primarily of our sergeants at our stations. It includes more time for supervision, so sergeants being able to show up on calls and just observe deputy behavior. I have occasion to show up on calls for service. Just last week, I showed up on a call for service, and I was able to watch how our deputies, how they handled a call on their own self-initiated activity that resulted in arrest. And I was able to use my 25 years of experience in law enforcement to pull them aside afterwards and give them some tips, maybe some different ways that they could have done things, you know, differently, maybe a little bit better, more effectively, or more efficiently. Our sergeants do the same thing, but if they're stuck on high workload in the station, you know, reviewing reports, reviewing body worn cameras, there's less time for them to be out in the field, going to our deputies' calls, observing them, and providing them with that positive feedback and that mentoring and developing. You know, a huge part of it is just ensuring that the way we provide services is lawful, that it's effective, and that it's safe for both us and for the community. And so we think that's a very important measure by which we determine staffing levels and what the benefits would be of adding a sergeant cover car. So the proposal that is before you tonight is to add one sergeant position cover car. That will provide us with 12 hours coverage per day, seven days per week. Our plan is to staff that car at a time when call volumes are the busiest, so likely 10 to 10 or 11 to 11, to help alleviate that and to provide that overlap supervision during the busiest times of the day. The cost of this sergeant car is shared with the county of Ventura, and it's shared based on the ratio of county deputies that a sergeant oversees as it compares to the ratio of city deputies that a sergeant oversees. Backfill is included in the cost, so when that sergeant is off on vacation or calls in sick, we will backfill that position with another sergeant to ensure we have that additional 12 hours of coverage every single day of the week. Based on that cost sharing with the county of Ventura, the cost for adding this patrol cover car for 12 hours of coverage seven days a week is $447,782. And this includes everything that we need to get the sergeant out in the field supervising our deputy sheriffs and reducing that workload on the existing patrol sergeant and lowering those numbers and getting them more closely aligned with what we have in our other contract cities. And so that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you all may have.
Who has questions? Councilmember Tennyson.
First off, Commander, you said that sergeants have to review all uses of force, and a lot of times, people think of as use of force of a shooting, a fight, or use of a baton. And sergeants have to review all of them. What other types of use of force do sergeants have to review?
The use of force you mentioned are actually very rare. The biggest number of uses of force we have come from takedowns. Comes when we have to arrest somebody, they resist, and they get taken to the ground, maybe pushed up against a wall so that we can get handcuffs on them. We at the sheriff's office take our review and our uses of force to a different level. If we pull a taser out and point a taser at somebody, if we pull a handgun out and point a handgun at somebody, for example, let's say we respond to a residential burglary call and we encounter somebody there, our guns are out of our holsters for our safety, and they may get pointed at somebody. Just the pointing of a firearm or taser results in a use of force documentation and review by our sergeants. So our, our uses of force, there's probably a dozen different things that we review uses of force for.
The reporting requirements of the sergeant based on changes of law, for instance, documenting every stop and things like that, things have changed obviously over the last 14 or 15 years. What types of things do sergeants have to What types of things do sergeants have to report on and review, like documenting every stop, the racial profiling, and things like that?
Yeah, so last year, the app we use to document our racial identity profiling contacts, so what that is, is every single time that we detain somebody in the city of Camarillo, we are required to document that for racial identity profiling, our Profiling Act of 2015. We collect certain demographics about the person who was stopped, and we also document our actions. Each one of those documentations required review from our sergeants to ensure that there's, the law prevents us from having any personal identifying information in there, and so our sergeants have to do a review of each one of those to ensure that we're complying with the law. Last year in Camarillo, I think we had 9,700 RIPA entries, and so each one of those 9,700 entries required a sergeant's review before we could submit it, and that eventually is submitted to the Department of Justice here in the state of California. But each one of those 9,700 here in Camarillo alone, which is a significant, it's a significant additional administrative, it's not a burden, but it's workload on our sergeants, for sure.
You had a slide up there showing span of control with 11 and potentially 11 additional deputies. That included everybody out of the station, not just deputies assigned to Camarillo, is that correct?
That's correct. That includes our deputies who oversee the unincorporated, who patrol the unincorporated areas as well.
And has the county already indicated an approval on this since there'll be a budget impact to them as well?
We've had discussions with the county, and they have indicated that they would support this.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kildee.
Yeah, thanks, Eric, for the presentation. In the change, chain of command, is there any difference between a patrol sergeant and just a regular sergeant?
We have sergeants who are assigned to specialized units, and so they oversee specifically the deputies who are assigned to their specialized unit. So an example of that would be our detective unit. So we have a detective sergeant, and that detective sergeant oversees five detectives who are assigned to that unit. But that detective sergeant is in the office, those detectives are in the office, so they don't play into our span of control. We don't consider them part of the span of control because they're not out in the field conducting patrol operations. And if they do go out in the field because they're investigating or doing a surveillance, their sergeant will be with them, so they're not considered in the span of control.
Okay, and then, will this create a shortage of necessary sergeants with this new position? Because we've discussed this in previous years, and has that, where do we stand with that, if you will?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. So we talked about this around 18 months ago, and at the time, the sheriff's office couldn't move forward with this request because we were in a pretty significant staffing shortage, and we would not have been able to provide the bodies to fill this position had you all approved at that time. Our staffing has improved quite significantly in the last 18 months, and that is really, the need was there all along, but that's really what spurred on this conversation, this request, is that we're finally up to the staffing levels where we can put sergeants in those positions if the council and the board of supervisors approves this request.
And my last question, we want to strategically implement this individual, of course, and it's 12 hours a day. Will that be continuously looked at, like, let's just say daylight savings time as opposed to non-daylight saving time, and statistically driven, which this is, and we want to make sure that we have that personnel there when they're most needed? Will we continue to look at the changing statistics about when and where and how they should be deployed?
Yeah, we always, we always look at the data behind that, and the data drives our decisions on this. It's interesting, though, that in the data we've considered here, it's less based on daylight savings and that sort of thing, and it's mostly based on people's habits of when they leave the house, when they go to work, when they return home from work, when they discover that crimes might have occurred while they were gone. You know, when people are out on the roads during the busiest time of the day, that's when our deputies are making their traffic stops. And so the numbers and the time of day generally don't change, it's very consistent throughout the year. But we do use data to drive our decisions, and we'll continue to do that.
One other question, is there enough money in the budget to fund this position?
Is that a question for me?
Question for staff, or you, whoever wants to answer it.
I would say that that is something that we're discussing in the current budget, and it appears that we would have, that we would have a balanced budget with these two positions.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember Santangelo.
Quick question, this gets filled by two people?
It does.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all. Thanks, thank you for your presentation.
Welcome.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Thank you very much, Chief Tennyson. So I know from, like, clinical and psychological research, there is a pretty direct link between duty of stress and deleterious effects on the health outcomes of officers. The other piece is the organizational stress, and this is related to, you know, rapid shift rotations, authoritarian supervisors, which I know you're not, you know, going many days without days off, and then heavy workloads. And you touched on significantly on heavy workloads and the impact. Would you say right now that with just what we have currently, that there is a significant emotional, some emotional distress because of the workload, as it is right now?
I will tell you that the workload for our deputies has come down since our staffing levels have come up, right? There's less overtime burden on our deputy sheriffs, and the overtime burden was quite significant before. We do see some cyclical overtime increases that happen during the summer when people start taking vacations. We do anticipate our overtime is going to go up again this summer. We're filling some vacant positions throughout the sheriff's office as well that will have a little bit of impact on our patrol operations. Our sergeants do a lot of work here at the Camarillo Station, and they feel the work that they're doing, and they would like to be out in the field more and be on calls more than they can because of the workload. But in addition to the stress that the sergeants might feel, it's important for them to be out in the field and be observing deputy behavior, because oftentimes, it's the sergeants who see the stress in the deputies that's created from working all the overtime and can pull our deputies aside and say, hey, look, you know, you seemed a little short in the way you answered that call, or, you know, you seem a little bit withdrawn. And the sergeants with, most of our sergeants have a lot of experience in law enforcement, and through that experiences, they can read and they understand our deputies when they're under stress. And so what we think probably one of the bigger impacts is that those sergeants will be out in the field to be able to see the deputies and see how they're operating, and it'll help uncover some of that stress. And we have a lot of resources available at the sheriff's office in the county of Ventura that those sergeants then could help direct people to if they see the need for it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, for me, I support moving forward with this. I think it is important to have the proper resources as we continue to prioritize public safety in our community. My question's surrounding, you know, emotional distress. I think, yes, it's important to have the people out there doing and providing the service, but it's also important to take care of the people who are providing that service. So I personally like to move that staff's recommendations forward.
Okay, well, can I come back to you for a motion in a minute?
Sure.
I promise. I'll come back to you for the motion. Any other questions at this point?
No.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions, Commander Tennyson, and then I want to also let the council members comment on what they would like to do. First of all, I'm supportive of the concept. Can you go back to the, two questions, can you go back to the PowerPoint slide showing the self-initiated activity? There we go, sergeant workload comparison. So about 50, I just want to make sure I understand, so about 59,000 plus in Camarillo. In the, how do you track the self-initiated activity? Give a couple of examples, and what percentage does that comprise, for example, of the 59,000, if you know? So self-initiated activity is tracked through our CAD system. So, for example, yesterday I went out to lunch, and I saw somebody that looked like they might be under the influence to me, and they were sitting in a parking lot, their behavior was suspicious because they were walking back and forth to a liquor store, they walked into a restaurant, walked back to a liquor store, and their behavior was suspicious. So I radio into our dispatch that I'm going to be busy talking to somebody, and I walked up and generated a conversation with somebody. That conversation resulted in a couple of arrests, so all of that information is tracked through our CAD system. So the fact that I went, we call it 10-6, which means busy, I went busy on a subject in a vehicle, is tracked through our CAD system, so that is considered self-initiated activity. And then a couple of deputies came over to assist me, it resulted in two arrests, and so then the arrests are tracked through our reporting system. So we have various databases where we go to retrieve the data that we've included in this chart.
What would you think is the percentage of self-initiated activity as part of that cumulative number?
You're going to test my math right here, but we had, and I'm going to embarrass myself in front of everybody here, we had 16,000 pieces of self-initiated activity out of that 60, so roughly a quarter.
Yeah, I was going to say right around 25%, so relatively high. Okay, all right. No, thank you, and it wasn't my intent to embarrass you, I think you did really well on the math.
Thank you.
The second question is this, can you go to the graph that shows the number of deputies in the Camarillo Station, based out of Camarillo Station? Perfect, thanks. So I have 20, yeah, so I have 22 Camarillo, how many, out of the 22, how many are assigned to the city and how many unincorporated area?
So the highest number, well, it's the only number assigned to the unincorporated area, two are assigned to patrol the unincorporated area, all the rest are city deputies.
So two for unincorporated?
Yes.
Okay, and the rest are, rest are city? Okay. All right, thank you. Before I have Councilmember Martinez Bravo make a motion on this, I would like to ask council members whether they have any specific thoughts on this. I'll start with Councilmember Tennyson.
I do. I have a little bit of experience. I was in the Marine Corps and then spent 32 years in the sheriff's office, and in the Marine Corps, a general would tell you that the backbone of the military is the non-commissioned officer, the enlisted men and women. I had the opportunity to sit in the same chair that Commander Tennyson is, and I can tell you that our patrol sergeants and our sergeants assigned to the jail are the backbone of law enforcement. They're the ones that oversee every single thing a deputy does, they're the ones that implement the policies that come on from what we used to call the pointy end of the ship, which is where Commander Tennyson spends a lot of time. So without sergeants pushing forward the policies and the philosophy of the agency, the agency will fail, and adding this extra position, I think, would be critical. When I was a sergeant, I would probably, and we were on eight-hour shifts at the time, I would probably spend 50% of my time in the station, reviewing reports, doing two roll call trainings, and doing performance appraisals. So only half of my time was spent in the field, and that was detrimental to the effectiveness of our deputy sheriffs on the streets. I'd assume that out of a 12-hour shift, it's not unusual for them to spend at least a third of their time on report review and roll call training and mentoring deputies not in the field. And so I think it's critical that we add this second position, and obviously, something I would wholeheartedly support.
Vice Mayor Kildee.
That was well said. I know, as I had mentioned before, we had a conversation, you know, some 18 months ago about this, as the city's needs and requests start to grow here, that, you know, this is going to be a position, I think, that could make our department not only the best in the county, but even better than that, so I'm supportive of that. And I know the Commander Tennyson takes this very seriously here, he would not ask for it if he didn't think that it was needed and to help our department, so I support that as well.
Councilmember Santangelo.
You know, when I was working at the jail, and deputies would bring who they arrested in, I would start to learn and talk to them, and I would learn a little bit about where different officers, depending on where they worked and how busy different locations were. And I was surprised to hear how busy Camarillo was. So it's nice to know that my anecdotal experience matches with the data, and I don't think Camarillo is busy because it's crime-ridden, it's busy because there's an out-of-whack staffing. And when you compare it to the other cities, you can really see that. So I really appreciate the time that you've taken multiple times now to give us this presentation, but it's important, and the data really does support increasing the staffing, so I'm going to support this.
So before I call on you to make a motion, Councilmember Martinez Bravo, I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, thank you, Commander Tennyson, I think this is critically important from a public safety standpoint, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. From my Vantus standpoint, my personal perspective, public safety is the number one priority of our city and the number one reason, number one reason why I'm here to advocate for that. I think it's the number one priority of the city. I think these are dollars that are significant, but they are very well spent. Councilmember Tennyson took the words out of my mouth, I was going to say that patrol sergeants are the backbone of the department, and I really appreciate the reasons you articulated, particularly when you have just one patrol sergeant who is in the office and not able to be out in the field. It's somewhat akin, the analogy, somewhat akin to why we put in the service writers, the SSTs, I'm sorry, the service technicians, so we could free deputies to be in the field. And this is somewhat the same kind of logic, so it has my full support, and I appreciate what, I appreciate the thoughtful nature in which you've brought this. And now I think I'm going to ask Councilmember Martinez Bravo, you have a motion?
Thank you, yes, I would like to officially move to approve the addition of a sergeant car cover, requiring the addition of two sergeant positions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildee?
Yes.
And Mayor Tremble?
Yes.
All right, that record will reflect that was approved on a unanimous 5-0 vote. We're going to need to reconvene the sanitary district at this point.
I reconvene the sanitary district?
All right, and we've got the sanitary district and city council in joint session, and we have two discussion items. The first is item L, oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, hang on just a second, it's 6:05, this is typically the time reserved for public comment. I do not see anybody in the audience for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment cards or any requests to speak? Okay, so we will dispense with that, and now officially go on to item L, which is the CalPERS retired annuity agreement, and I think Ms. Nichols, you're going to present that to us.
Yes, thank you. The finance assistant director position recently became vacant, and due to critical timelines of large-scale responsibilities and projects, as well as to effectively manage various operations, hiring an experienced individual in this temporary limited term assignment is necessary. Kristi Trulson has over 30 years of experience in public sector finance, recently retiring as finance director. Some may recall that Ms. Trulson was part of the finance team here in the city of Camarillo between 1991 and 2008. If approved, Ms. Trulson will work with us while we undergo professional executive recruitment and to provide extra help to the finance director. As stated in the agenda report, among other rules, her employment is limited to 960 hours per fiscal year, her rate of pay will be set within the range of the assistant director position, and no other benefits will be extended, earned, or paid. Pursuant to California government code regulating the public employees retirement system, or which we have come to known as PERS, due to the retirees' employment within 180 days of retirement and to cover other requirements, the city council is required to consider this item under discussion and adopt a resolution citing Ms. Trulson's temporary hire. If adopted, the resolution will be submitted to CalPERS, and upon their confirmation, Ms. Trulson will begin employment for a limited duration of time while a recruitment and appointment is made to the position. The city council and CSD board are requested to consider the adoption of resolution, authorizing the city and district manager to enter into limited duration agreement for employment with retired and newton Kristi Trulson.
Thanks, Ms. Nichols. All right. Thanks, Ms. Nichols. All right, are there any questions from any council members on this item? Vice Mayor Kildee?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to do a comment when it's appropriate.
Okay, hang on, let me just see if there are any questions, any questions? Time for comments. Vice Mayor Kildee?
This is a huge win for the city. I've known Kristi for all of my years on the council. She started off as an employee of ours until she was stolen by a city that will go unnamed and by a city manager that will go unnamed. Kristi is outstanding, like it said here, experience in budgeting, accounting, payroll, purchasing, leadership skills, and expertise, and that only says half of the study and the saying here, she's even- And the saying here, she's even a better person than that. So I totally support this. All of you, I'm sure, will be very satisfied with her employment. Whoever talked her into coming back to the city is on my top 10 hit parade list. So I totally support this.
Are there any, are there any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Kristi Trulson on a limited agreement for employment with retired and new it.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Kildee?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Tremble?
Yes.
All right, the record will reflect that was approved on a 5-0 vote. We're now going to move to item M, the fiscal year 2425.
Sir, I'll need a vote for the CSD as well.
Thank you for reminding us. Sorry.
I'll need a motion.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Director Kildee?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Tremble?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes 5-0.
And thank you, Madam Clerk. And the record will reflect that the sanitary district board is still in session because we have Mr. Uribe here on item M for fiscal year 2425 preliminary budget review. Mark?
Thank you, members of the city council and sanitary board. It's on?
Yeah, it's on. We can hear you okay.
Good. This item is an update on the status of the fiscal year 2425. That's next fiscal year, beginning July 1. The status of the budget development. We're still in the early stages, and tonight we're going to focus on the general fund revenues, but we're going to continue to work on the budget, work on the expenditure side from all the department submittals, and then bring back a full-budget presentation at the May 19 workshop, budget workshop. We're going to start off a little bit talking about some economic updates, some economic stats that help guide where we're going with our projections, help us shape the structure we're in, the trends that we're seeing. These are, first bullets are two comments. One from the California LAO's office that declares the economy's in a downturn. And from Beacon Economics, they project slower growth in 2024, but not a contraction. And a couple of the factors that they're looking at, the leading indicators are the unemployment, where they are projecting an increase in unemployment. They're also projecting some rising interest rates and a decrease in consumer spending. So we'll look at each of these graphs, and when you see these graphs, you're going to notice one thing that stands out, the large spike related to the pandemic, and then coming back down. So the unemployment rate, the big spike was right there, June 2020, right at the height of the pandemic, where the unemployment was up around 23%. Since then, it's come down significantly, and now it's in about the 4% range. And historical average unemployment rate is about 5.7%. And according to Forbes, a healthy unemployment rate is somewhere between 3% and 5%. So we're still in that healthy range. But again, with the economic projections from different economists, they feel like unemployment might start to creep up. Next up, we have the Consumer Price Index, a widely-held measure of inflation. Again, we see that large spike. We hit a peak of about 9% in June of 2022. It's about 18 months ago. Since then, it's come down pretty dramatically, and we're now in about the 3.5% range. And the 10-year average for inflation, or CPI, is about 3%. A 15-year average, about 2.4%. So these are just metrics and trends and statistics that we kind of keep in our minds as we're doing our projections. The Federal Reserve target rate is 2% for inflation. Not quite there, we haven't made it yet. They, as you recall, done several increases over the last 18 months. Now, the next meeting is March 19, where they're actually expected to cut rates by about a quarter percent, all in an attempt to help slow down inflation, bring it down to that 2% rate, without going too far down. That would potentially cause a recession if it goes too far down. The last one here is consumer trends. The first graphic there, retail sales on a year-over-year change. Again, you see the large decrease during the pandemic, when there was a total economic shutdown, when stores shut down at the height of the pandemic. Then we saw this very quick recovery, where the sales went way up as quickly as May of 2021. And then we've seen it steadily come down, so now we're back almost to the average numbers in the 3, 3.5% range of retail sales year-over-year. Then we come over to consumer confidence, and consumer-to-confidence is a measure of what consumers are feeling about their expected financial situation. If consumers are optimistic, it means they're going to spend more, and that means that the economy is going to expand and grow. The opposite, if consumers are pessimistic, then they're not going to spend as much, and that becomes an economic slowdown. And this index is set around a base of 100 as an index number. And at that baseline, anything above 100 would be an optimistic trend, anything below being pessimistic. And as of December 23, 2023, it was in maybe the 105% range, 105 index range. In February, it was 106, and that's down from January of 111. So you can see just a gradual decrease in the last couple of months. So that's where some of these economists are foreseeing just a continued slowdown of the economy. So with those types of factors that are kind of setting the tone for the upcoming year, and we're continuing to review and pay attention to all of these different forecasts and all this different information, we put together preliminary budget, and we start with the general fund revenues. And these are listed in order of size primarily. The two big ones, property tax and sales tax consistently. And then we've got franchise fees, transient occupancy tax, and building permits, and so on. The majority of these revenues we're forecasting right now with the preliminary numbers with what we know now reflect some of that slowing economy. So we're looking in, somewhere in the 2, 2.5% range for most of these general fund revenues. Let me mention, general fund revenue being the fund where most of the activities, most of the city's services are recorded, most of the city's revenues are recorded. Couple of them stand out here, a large 21% increase there in the building permits. That's based on projected development activity. And in working with our building division, they see some projects coming up, some activities coming up, that they think is going to increase next fiscal year. Conversely, over here on charges for services, down 20%. That is also project-related development activity, development fees. What's driving that decrease is, in this current year, 2.9 million, a couple of very large projects, the revenues were received from those two large projects. Those are one-time revenues that come in. We don't expect, at this point, those type of large projects coming in next fiscal year. That's why you see the drop-off. So again, those two revenues that have the biggest swings are development activity-related. That's, that's the general fund picture. What we also wanted to touch on a little bit was, one of our major challenges is with the Water Enterprise Fund. Now, I spoke about general fund being the primary fund where most of the city's activities and services are recorded, and also the larger revenues, property tax and sales tax. When we start talking about enterprise funds and the water utility being one of the major enterprise funds, those funds are operated based off of the rates and the rate payers. So the people who are benefiting from the water service, from the sewer service, are paying through rates to support those services. The challenge we've been going and seeing in the water side is fluctuations, large fluctuations in the usage or demand of customers. That translates into water sales and revenues. When we look at the revenues swinging and fluctuating, one thing is constant, the expenditures. The expenditures don't go down accordingly, up or down accordingly. Expenditures are fairly fixed because there is a certain cost involved in getting the water to everyone's faucet at home. Then whether they turn it on or don't turn it on, that becomes the revenue and the usage portion of the equation. But the expenditures are still there, the expenditures to get the water ready to, for usage. So what, as we're still working through those projections, and we are in the middle of updating our water rate study, we don't have any, we have rates that were adopted last year that are going to go into effect on July 1. Nothing will change there. But we are doing an update, so we can kind of give an update on how things are coming to pass based on the projections we had a year ago. And it starts setting, again, the tone for when we start entering into our next two-year cycle of a rate study. So back to the water demand, what this chart shows is a 10-year history going backwards of usage patterns compared to rain totals. And you can see that what we've said is there is a correlation between precipitation, the amount of rain, and the amount of demand, which would, you would expect. This just clearly presents it graphically. So starting back here in 1314, we had, the blue bars are the total demand, the number of acre-feet sold. And then the orange line is the precipitation or rainfall totals. So you can see back in 1314, very low level of precipitation, huge demand. As we start going forward, we see how the dips correlate. In 1617, high, high level of rainfall, low demand. Moving forward, another high level of rainfall, low demand. Then we got into the big drought years, 2021. Very little rain, very large demand, and so on. The key takeaway now is when we're trying to project for the near future, the next year, the next two years, and so on, we're seeing this trend right here. Couple of very heavy rainy seasons, the demand has really dropped off, very low demand, and that equates, again, to very low revenues, while the expenditures are still at the same level. So that's the trend that we have talked about for a couple of years now, through the different sessions and talking about our rate study with the Utilities Committee, and then again with council. It's something that's hitting most, most water agencies, and you're going to see in the news, other agencies are starting to deal with this. So we got a little bit ahead of it, but it's still something we're dealing with. So that is what's going on with the water side. We expect to have some kind of a preliminary update on the water rate study projections at the Utility Committee level in April or May. Okay? So I'll pause there to see if there are any questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor Kildee?
It's okay. Mark, are we, as far as the water is steady, are we nimble enough to kind of adjust our numbers accordingly to what vis-à-vis the amount of water that we need to purchase versus amount of water that's consumed? Are we nimble enough to make, you know, adjustments on that? Because I don't, you know, you look at some dramatic, you know, rainfalls here, and obviously when there's dramatic rainfall, that, you know, the consumption of water goes down too, and then also with the different seasons. But make a long question, and hopefully you can make a shorter answer than my question. Are we nimble enough to be able to make some adjustments to adjust?
I think the adjustments that we are able to make come more on the providing for more water when necessary. I think it's a little bit tougher to scale back our operation in the periods of high precipitation, when there's not a lot of demand. Then we would have to ramp up, I would say, an example, if we decided to cut expenditures because the revenues are dropping down. You know, one of the primary expenditures is personnel, and we wouldn't want to get into a situation where we're cutting staff and then having to rehire staff to adjust to go along with the demand patterns. So to that extent, the adjustment would happen on the high-usage sides, where we may have to purchase more water. And that's where the desalter comes into play, where we are now with the desalter able to generate water at a lower cost than we would if we had to go out and purchase it. So I'm not sure if that answers your question. It's a little tough to adjust related to weather patterns, so to speak.
And then, and if you talk about our fixed costs, it's a little bit difficult to adjust fixed costs.
Correct.
I mean, fixed costs are just what they say they are. They are fixed costs. And that's the cost of providing the water to, in this particular case, to our customers.
Correct. The key approach we're taking is trying to get the best information we can to make the best projections we can looking forward.
And we'll continue to do that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Not a question, but a comment when it's appropriate.
Okay, hang on just a second. Any questions? Now we're going to go to comments. Councilmember Tennyson?
Just addressing the water issue, for, you know, listening before I was on the council to Mr. Tremble talking about water issues for quite a while, the large push was on conservation. And that's a two-headed monster when it comes to water rates for the city. And I watched over the last two or three years, a lot of re-landscaping of residential houses, lawns, things like that, just in my neighborhood. It's unbelievable how many people have taken out lawns, put in drought-tolerant plants, artificial turf, and things like that. So my assumption would be, we're not going to ever rebound to the high level because so many people have become used to that style of landscaping in the desert we live in, and they've adjusted their lifestyles to conserve water. So I think that's going to be an uphill battle for us trying to balance rates with consumption. And I hope consumption doesn't go up on the one hand, but I hope we have the money to keep paying for delivering water to my faucet.
Right. Maybe another way to put it is that we're dealing with a new normal.
Yes. All right. Any other comments before Mark continues? You're continuing on to the next topic?
That completes the presentation.
Oh, that's it?
I would just say then we just have the suggested action. Receive and file the report or provide any feedback as we start, again, developing the budget for next fiscal year.
Okay. Is there any feedback that any council members would like to provide to Mark before we go ahead and indicate we're going to receive and file? Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Mark, thank you very much for your presentation. And if you go back to that, the graph, I, I don't know if it's because I'm a nerd when I love graphs, but I really liked that graph. There's so much to say about it, and I thought it was very clear. So I really appreciated the work on that. Thank you.
Any, any other comments? I'll just note for the record, I think Metropolitan Water District of Southern California was considering a 13% rate increase yesterday or the day before. Cuyagus is going to be considering a rate increase as well, and in, and it is in no insignificant part related to the declining sales of water. So that graph speaks volumes. It really does, and it tells not just our story, but the story of a wholesaler like Met and, and Cuyagus, as well as a retailer like the city of Camarillo. And I think Vice Mayor Kildee had a comment?
I just have one question, Mark. Will you come back in the preliminary in a month or two? Whenever we do come back, will you adjust this graph? Will this graph be presented as?
What we would present is along the lines of a projection with some assumptions moving forward, because this is the current fiscal year. We may have a couple more months of data for this fiscal year, but likely it won't change too much. But I think the better information we'd be trying to bring forward is our projections moving forward. And I do want to say this is a, it's, got to give credit to the Public Works Department who put this graph together. It is a very closely-coordinated effort between Finance and Public Works to go through these rate and water data.
Yeah, kudos to Mr. Klotzel and Public Works, and it really does tell the story, because look, look at what our next urban water management plan is going to look like. I mean, when you have, when you're going from 9,500 acre-feet in terms of a total demand in 2000, or 1314 to 6,470 in 2324, that is a significant drop in demand. Okay. Any other comments? All right, this is a receive-and-file item. Without objection, we will go ahead and receive and file with thanks to Mark, to you, to Rena, to you, as well as to everybody in Finance.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think at this point, we're going to need to adjourn the sanitary district.
Sanitary district will also receive and final, receive and file, and we will adjourn.
All right, thank you. Are we doing okay, Madam Clerk, in terms of the procedure? Okay, good. I just wanted, just wanted to check in. All right, at this point, we have a closed-session report by the city attorney?
Yes, thank you. We did conduct closed session on the two matters, but there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right. With that, there being no other business before us on the agenda, we are adjourned